Work session of the Penfield Town Board. I'm officially going to call this meeting to order. Before I get on with the actual agenda, I would like to just place the official record notice into the record. Due to COVID-19 virus and the closing of town operations consistent with the governor's executive orders, the August 12, 2020 Town Board work session meeting is being held remotely via Zoom. This meeting will also be video recorded and broadcast live via the town's website at Penfield.org, on the town's government access channel 1303, and on streaming media device Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. Anyone can go to Penfield TV in your device's app store, and this app is free. The meeting will later be transcribed. Questions regarding video coverage, please contact PenfieldTV@3408661. And I want to make that part of the official record. With that, I will let the minutes reflect that all of the board members are present with the exception of Councilwoman Dra, who is out of town here in the auditorium. We have Councilman Ockeden. Councilman Moore, on Zoom with us, is Councilwoman Cole. We also, in the town auditorium, have Mr. Costello, Developmental Services, and of course, our ace deputy town clerk, Sue Scheit, who's taking our minutes. And speaking of minutes, we have the July 8, 2020, minutes before us, and I would entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Councilman Ockeden, seconded by Councilman Moore. I'll ask, are there any questions regarding the minutes of July 8? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote of approval.
Cole?
Aye.
LaFountain?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
Four ayes.
All right, thank you. This evening, we do not have any public hearings. We do have one guest, and we'll tee that up as we're bringing the applicants online. This is Danny and Anthony Daniele, requesting a modification in occupancy at the Bellagio Apartment Building at 1384 Empire Boulevard. I see both Anthony and Danny on the line with us. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And I'll ask Mr. Costello if he would tee this up further for us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. LaFountain. As you know, the Bellagio was approved by the board late last year, earlier this year. All the plans were signed off, construction actually started, and that was the approval for a 95-unit apartment building. Recently, I had conversations with Danny Daniele, who's interested in modifying three of the units to accommodate, and I'm going to let him go through it in more details to what he wants, but basically to accommodate smaller living units and taking away a larger living unit that they originally proposed for the site. So Danny, if you'd like to step in, you're welcome.
All right, Danny, before you start, I'll just let the minutes reflect that the information that the Daniele's submitted has been presented to the board. We do have that as part of the file, and we'll just let the record reflect that. And Danny, if you will, please.
Thank you. And Jim, or the guys back there, if you can put some of the visual on the board there for the floor plans. But in a nutshell, as you know, we were working on this project for almost a year. The project was at some point 150 units, and then we brought it down to about 120. We ended up with 95 units. On the way to get down to the 95 units, we've obviously made a tremendous amount of changes with Pastrow Associates, and we worked hand-in-hand with them to make sure that we get the right units and the right size. It wasn't until probably about three or four weeks ago, or whenever it was, we were doing walkthroughs through the actual construction, which is going great, thank God. We looked at some of the units, and we had some questions, and we said, yeah, why is it like this, and why did we design it this way? It looks a little odd. And, long story short, there were three units that, at one point, in order to keep reducing the size of the project, they had turned six units into three by making three individual units. They made them double occupancy. And on this particular set, they made them into what they called an in-law suite occupancy. So there's two sets in there. And I think in all the rigmarole, we probably didn't even go through it too, as well as we should have, I guess, with the speed of the project. All the other units that we changed, either from two bedrooms to one, or from one to three, or whatever it was, that all turned out great. This is the only kind of snafu that we found through our walkthroughs, and now we're going in a little more detail. So basically, as Jim said, we're looking to turn three of these double-bedroom units to separate the rooms, and it's going to turn into six single-bedroom units. The net effect will be the addition of three units on the project, bringing it from 95 to 98. What's obviously important to note is there will be absolutely no change in total square footage on the lot, on the site. There'll be absolutely no change on the size of the building. There'll be absolutely no change in the architecture. There'll be absolutely no change in the parking. The parking garage was actually, I think, designed at about 99 or 100 parking spaces. We've actually continued to modify it, and I think we actually have 102 or 103 spaces once we stripe it appropriately. But nevertheless, even without doing that, based on what's approved, I think we have over 100 parking spaces. So we still have the threshold of having one covered parking space per unit. And on a side note, just for anyone else listening, typically, the one-bedroom units would have less school kids, which obviously puts less pressure on any schooling. There's obviously less noise, because single occupancy units usually have less entertainment. There's less cars. Instead of having two bedrooms, there's one. So the most you're going to have, and there's one couple, as opposed to two couples, or a couple and some kids. The net effect will be the exact same amount of beds, but it'll be change in units. And the other thing is, the carpentry has already begun on the second and third and fourth floor units, and now is the time that we're working with the carpenters to try and figure out how we can re-modify that. That is the majority of what I had to share with the town board, and if you have any other questions, please ask.
All right, thank you, Danny. I'll ask the board, any questions for either Danny or Anthony Daniele on this matter?
Mr. Supervisor, just one quick question to Danny. Just want to reiterate, Danny, what you were saying before, just to make it clear that the square footage of the building, the size of the building, dimensions of the building with this requested change is not changing. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Other questions or comments for the Daniele's? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask Mr. Costello, is there anything that has not been added to the record that you believe is important to be part of the record this evening?
Mr. LaFountain, the staff did review the parking plan, which we received at the time of site plan review, and we did verify the fact that there is adequate parking to accommodate 98 units.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Costello. Anything else?
No.
All right, and then I'll ask the Daniele's, any additional input that you'd like to add to the record that you haven't already spoken to this evening?
No, that's most of it.
No, sir.
All right. Seeing no further discussion on this matter, I'll ask the board, is there a motion on this particular project?
I'll move it.
It's been moved by Councilman Moore, seconded by Councilwoman Cole. This is to make the modifications from 95 to 98, not changing square footage, adding any architectural changes to the building, or any other modifications to the property at all. Seeing no further discussion, and seeing there are a motion and a second on the table, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Cole?
Aye.
LaFountain?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
Four ayes.
Okay, Mr. Costello, would ask you and staff to, as part of this review this evening, to memorialize that back with a letter to the Daniele's so that they have that for their files and for our files for this change.
Yes, sir.
All right, gentlemen, thank you very much. Great to see you both.
Thank you, have a great evening.
Be well.
Thank you for your time.
Be well and be safe.
Absolutely, you as well. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
All right, thank you. We'll move on, and before the deputy town clerk yells at me here, I want to just jump back to monthly reports, and I want to let the record show that most of our monthly reports have been received. We have a couple of outstanding, and I would anticipate that those will be in by the end of the week. And thank you in advance for our department heads for getting that information into the board, for their information and update. We'll move on to action items. The first action item, Item A, is Shadow Pines Conceptual Master Plan Revised Draft Review. And at this point, I would ask Mr. Costello, who seems to be the star of the show this evening, on behalf of our staff, Mr. Costello, if you would like to just give everyone a brief update as to where we are with this.
Thank you, Mr. LaFountain. As you know, the board did review the revised plan, which identified the removal of the proposed community center, or recreation center, if you will. The supervisor then gave the public the ability to make comment, and also particularly comment from the Shadow Pines Land Use Advisory Committee, because in addition to the actual plan, there was a narrative that was proposed, which was a draft narrative. We did send that off to the committee. You gave them until August 10 to make comment. We have received several comments. We're going through that right now, and trying to put together a packet for you. I think a lot of the comments were positive in nature, and made some good observations about the narrative as it was written originally. We'll try and get those back to the consultant as well, have him incorporate those comments into the final document, and then get it back to you and the committee as well for their review.
Okay. So as I looked at some of those, there were things like the addition of sidewalks in the area along Clark Road that would help feed into the property. Number of other comments that I think were very positive in nature as it related to making sure that the plan provided the most and best use for the broadest range of our residents across Penfield. So I thank everyone that provided input and feedback, not only from the residents, also the team, the land use team, that provided that information back. So I'll ask town board, next steps and path forward for that. As Mr. Costello indicated, the final touches are being put on the narrative for the plan. And is the board comfortable with advancing that to an acceptance point, or would the board like to wait for an additional few weeks before they advance that plan?
Mr. Supervisor, I'm comfortable with moving it forward. I think that the document's been out there for public review. You know, we had a public meeting on it and so forth. I served as the liaison to the town board, or from the town board to the Shadow Pines Land Use Advisory Committee. The members have had an opportunity to weigh in on it and review it, and as you and Mr. Costello mentioned, there are some really good comments from some of the advisory board members that we can take a look at and look to incorporate some of those into a final document, Jim, if that's what I'm understanding.
Exactly.
That your staff is planning to do. Okay, good. So I think we're in a position to keep it moving forward. I mean, the comments from the public and the advisory committee, I think, are being addressed, and I don't see a need to hold it up for no specific reason. And I think you said it well, Mr. Supervisor, that the ultimate plan is a template for the property. I think it includes a lot of different elements of active recreation and passive recreation, and some preservation of the land, and uses for trails, and some sporting, you know, some sporting activities and so forth. So it's a very broad use that I think benefits the general public really well, and I think we're in a good spot to keep it moving forward with incorporating some of the comments from the Shadow Pines Land Use Committee. So I support moving it forward at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any other comments or questions for staff?
I think we should move ahead. It's very well embedded. We had so many more comments by the Shadow Pines Advisory Committee as well, so I think though, it's gone through. We're ready, we're ready to move it forward.
Okay, very good.
I would agree, Mr. Supervisor. I think we're down to some really small details that are being discussed and looked at, so I too agree that we should move forward with this.
Okay. That being the case, I would entertain a motion of approval. That approval would be to direct staff to prepare a town board resolution for our next legislative session, for this board to accept the conceptual master plan, and for us to use that as our guide as we move forward with any type of development as was shown on our map and being proposed in that area, to include but not limit to things like pickleball and tennis courts, some field space, some disc golfing, hiking trails, biking trails, some lodges, some additional parking areas, some additional access points strategically placed around the site so that allows access from most any direction, north, south, east, and west. And if the board is good with that, I would entertain a motion of approval to move forward. Moved.
I think that was well said, and I would move it forward.
All right, so motion by Councilwoman Cole, seconded by Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Cole?
Aye.
LaFountain?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
Four ayes.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to Item B. This is Hatch, and it's specifically request for subdivision approval at 2105 Five Mile Line Road. And would ask, Mr. Costello, anything new from our public hearing now a number of weeks ago on this particular application?
Nothing new, Mr. Supervisor. We've heard nothing from the public, and we have no additional comments from the PRC.
Okay. With that being said, and for a reminder for our viewing audience, this is a piece of property in the four corners of Penfield, the Higbee House. And that property next door, we have Dr. Merkley. And then, right behind Dr. Merkley's office is Bang's. And Bang's and the Higbee property together on one parcel, they're separating that out so that Bang's will have its own property. There will be cross-access easements being proposed for that. And overall, everything else stays the same, other than some ownership. And with that, and if there are no further questions by the board, would entertain a motion of approval for this subdivision?
Mr. Supervisor, I'll make a motion for the approval of subdividing 2105 Five Mile Line Road.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Ockeden, Councilwoman, seconded by Councilwoman Cole. I'll ask, any further discussion by the board? I'll ask, Mr. Costello, any additional information that should be added to the record that has not been added?
Only the fact that we will be requiring a cross-access parking and maintenance agreement for all three properties that are involved in the actual use of that parking area.
Okay, so noted. With that motion and second on the table, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Cole?
Aye.
LaFountain?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
Four ayes.
Okay, we'll move on under action items. Item C, additional curb cut at 496 Embry Road. Mr. Tate, who's our director of public works, had brought this into the board. However, tonight, we have the one and the only Mr. Costello, who is pinching for Mr. Tate, and I'll ask, Mr. Costello, is there anything new to be added to the record on this particular application?
We have not received anything new. I know that a few of the board members had the opportunity to go out and look at the site, just to see what was proposed. There's really nothing new to add, and we have not received anything else from the applicant since that evening that we had it at the last work session.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Costello. Is there any comments, discussion by any of the board members on this particular application?
No.
I will share, for the record and for the board, that I'm not in favor of this particular added curb cut. I think there are other alternatives for that that can make it just as safe, but I want to make sure the board is aware of where I am on that position. With that, I would ask, is there a motion to move forward with a second curb cut at this location?
Mr. Supervisor, just an additional comment. I did go out and take a look at the property in question, and after kind of watching the traffic flow there, I personally thought it might be a good added benefit for that property. Again, I think it's important that, you know, all these requests be looked at individually. Obviously, it'd be nice, everybody'd probably love to have two entrances to their property, but I think the area has to dictate whether that's reasonable or not. And in my personal opinion, I believe that this property would be suitable for that. So just my comments on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ockeden. Other discussion, other comments? Okay, would entertain a motion of approval for this matter?
I'll make the motion for approval.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay. I'll recognize Mr. Moore and Councilwoman Cole, both seconding on that. I'll ask, if there being no further discussion, I'd ask for a roll call vote of approval for that added curb cut at 496 Embry Road.
Cole?
Aye.
LaFountain?
No.
Moore?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
Three ayes, one no.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Item D. This is Howitt Bayview LLC, request for site plan approval at 1211 Empire Boulevard, and a portion of 41 Wilbur Track Road. And again, I'll recognize Mr. Costello. Has there been any additional input, comments that you would like to make the board aware since our public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Supervisor. As you know, we had the public hearing last week. At the end of the public hearing, you noted to the public that they had time to submit materials to the town board, and I believe today at 5:00 was the deadline for that timeframe. We have been receiving materials. We're collating those materials and getting them together so that you can have them as a packet. I know you're going to need time to review them. Certainly, you'll need some time to review them. So we expect to get those out to you either tomorrow or on Friday morning, and give you some time to look at it for your next meeting, if that's okay with you.
Okay. Board, I would assume that, based on the comments from Mr. Costello, and wanting to make sure that we properly vet this application out as we do all of our applications, I might suggest that we show this as a held item, and I'll ask for a vote on that, to show that as a held item. But I'll ask staff to prepare all that information, that additional information that they received, send it out, and then I would ask that we would put this item back on our work session on the August 26 date, and that'll give us a chance to review, ask any additional questions, or request any additional materials from staff or the applicant. So I would entertain a motion to hold this, to table this until August 26.
We will also get those comments out to the applicant as well, so they have the ability to address them.
Got it, thank you very much. Okay, is there a motion to table, to hold this matter until the 26?
Moved.
Second.
The move by Councilwoman Cole, and seconded by Councilman Ockeden, that we hold this matter. And I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Cole?
Aye.
LaFountain?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
Four ayes.
All right, thank you very much. This brings us to Item E, and customary agricultural operations slash residential chicken ordinance. And Mr. Ockeden has his name, as he was the person that has been championing in this effort. But before I recognize Mr. Ockeden for any of his comments, I'll just ask Mr. Costello, has there been any additional items that you've received as similar to our last application? We did hold this open for a period of time for anyone to speak either for or against this particular application, and I would just recognize Mr. Costello.
Thank you, yes, you're correct. We did hold this open until 5:00 this evening as well. We have received numerous emails regarding the proposal. Again, you're going to need to see those in more particular. I think Mr. Horowitz is going to need to see them so that we can incorporate some of the comments as they deem to be appropriate into that document. There are some things we didn't talk about, some health safety issues regarding possible medical care for the hens themselves, and how we handle that, and we're trying to work that out now internally as well. So there are some things yet that we need to work out, and he and I will be, Mr. Horowitz and I, will be meeting on Friday to look at those issues.
Okay, all right. I'll recognize Mr. Ockeden, who was originally brought this to the board for review, discussion, public hearing. I'll ask, is there any additional comments that you would like to make at this time, Mr. Ockeden?
Just as Mr. Costello mentioned, the public hearing on August 5th, we had a good amount of involvement from the residents, but keeping that hearing open until today certainly generated quite a few more comments and letters. So I know the public was grateful that it was kept open, gave them an opportunity to make comments, so thank you for that. Yeah, I think we're down to, you know, some small points here that were a result of that public hearing, that maybe raised a couple questions. I think they're small items. I understand that if legal wants to review those, it probably makes sense that we're doing this, we're going to do it once and do it right. So again, thank you. I look forward to hearing further comments from staff and Mr. Horowitz.
Thank you, Mr. Ockenden. I might suggest that with the town attorney, Mr. Costello, meeting on Friday to go over any and all comments that did come in, I would ask that we consider holding this until the August 26. That way, it would give the board an opportunity to see any changes that might be being proposed. I think all of them may be minor in nature overall, and to keep this moving forward and to keep it on track, would like to see us be able to wrap that up on the 26, and then come forward with a resolution to approve this modified new section regarding residential chickens on the legislative meeting on September 2.
It's a very reasonable timeframe, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay, great. Then I'd entertain a motion and a second to hold this until our August 26 meeting.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Supervisor.
Is there a second?
Second.
The move by Mr. Ockeden, seconded by Mrs. Cole. I'll ask, any additional items or comments? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Cole?
Aye.
LaFountain?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
Four ayes.
Okay, we'll move on to Item F, as in Frank. This is the Forest Ridge Special Districts. Again, we'll recognize Mr. Costello. Oh, Mr. Costello's getting ready with his map and his comments. We'll just remind the board, there are three different items that we heard with the public hearing. One was on sidewalks, one was with regards to the special district, and one was with regards to the sanitary sewer. And I'll ask Mr. Costello to maybe update us on any new individual information on those three applications.
Thank you. As you noted, this relates to the Forest Ridge subdivision, a proposed subdivision on the southeast corner of Plank Road and Jackson Road, which has been approved by the planning board for 72 lots. It included the requirement for the creation of a sanitary sewer extension, a sidewalk improvement district, and a special improvement district to maintain open spaces around the various perimeters of the project. We did have the public hearing on August 5. This is pretty much a procedural issue that needs to be done for each subdivision that comes before the town. We're in the process right now of wrapping up the sign-offs of the plans, but can't do that until that until this is completed, and we have not received any input whatsoever regarding this application.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Costello. These particular items somewhat consistent with large subdivisions that take place in the town, extension of sewer districts, sidewalk, and in this case intensified sidewalk district, and then maintaining, because this property and the pond on this property really benefits just that particular area, the special district is for those individuals that will benefit from that, not from a townwide standpoint. So I'll ask the board, any additional questions or comments on this particular item? I know that Mr. Costello, excuse me, I apologize. I know that Attorney Dick Horowitz would like us to have three separate votes for these and for these particular orders, and so we'll go down, we'll start first with the sanitary sewer district extension, and I would entertain a motion of approval for that.
So...
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion on the sanitary sewer? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Cole?
Aye.
LaFountain?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Four ayes.
Next, I'll ask the board and entertain a motion of approval for the intensified sidewalk district.
Cole?
Okay. Yeah, I was going to say, let's move it first, sorry. I apologize.
That's okay.
So I'll ask for a motion for intensified sidewalk. So Linda, thank you.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Moore, and again, this is for the sidewalks. Seeing no further discussion, I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Cole?
Aye.
LaFountain?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Four ayes.
And then finally, I'd ask for a motion of approval for the special district portion of the Forest Ridge Special Districts.
So moved.
Second.
The move by Mr. Ackenden, seconded by Mrs. Cole, and again, that is for the special district. Seeing no further discussion, I'll ask for a roll call vote of that item.
Cole?
Aye.
LaFountain?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Four ayes.
All right, thank you, board, and thank you, Sue. All right, that takes us to item G, Newfuglies. This is for a request for a hold harmless agreement at 67 Stone Ledge Way, and certainly wouldn't want to exclude Mr. Costello from this discussion. Mr. Costello, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. LaFountain. I did receive a request from Mr. Jeff Newfuglies at 67 Stone Ledge Way. He's requesting a license and hold harmless agreement to allow him to install a fence along the back portion of his property, his residence, that will then go along the side property line to the back, and then back around the back to the other side of the home. There was no problem other than the fact that there's a drainage easement on the west side of his property, as you can see here, along this property line, and there is a large, there's a large drainage pipe, as you can see here, running along that property line. I requested the town engineer to go to the site and measure off the pipe as it relates to the residents on their instrument survey map, and the town engineer determined that the line runs directly along the property line. So they can't draw a fence post into that area without impacting that storm sewer. As a result, I talked to Mr. Newfuglies about the idea of indenting the fence at least three feet in. The engineers are very comfortable if he's able to do that. He did indicate to me that he'd be happy to do that, and the engineers are satisfied that they will be on site when the time comes for the fence to be installed, and the PRC is recommending that the fence be installed with an indentation of three feet from the property line.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Costello, for that. I'll let the record show that what we've seen on the screen, we do have the plot plan for the property, we do have a photograph of the pipes, of the pipe, excuse me. We have the location of the white vinyl fence, and there is an aerial view as well that shows it down one property line, and then on the other one, an offset because of the sewer. So with that, I'd ask the board, any questions or comments on this particular application?
Mr. Supervisor, I'll make a motion to approve the hold harmless agreement for 67 Stone Ledge Way.
Thank you, Mr. Ackenden. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, good.
All right, move by Councilman Ackenden, seconded by Councilman Moore. This would allow a whole harmless agreement for 67 Stone Ledge Way. We'd ask Mr. Costello and the team to put together the usual resolution for this. We'll bring it before the town board so that that will be on the agenda for next week to provide that fence within the easement. Seeing no further discussion on this matter, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Cole?
Aye.
LaFountain?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Four ayes.
Okay, this brings us to the end of our agenda, and seeing no further business to come before the board this evening, the August 12, 2020 work session of the Penfield Town Board will stand adjourned at 7:40 PM. I'd like to thank everyone that participated. Thank you to PCTV and the gang downstairs for zooming us in and making sure that we're providing all the information to our residents. Be well and be safe. Thank you.